Good afternoon, convening the council time Wednesday, February 26, 2025. We'll start with the roll call.
Counselor Young?
Here.
Counselor Belkot?
Present.
Counselor Fuentes?
Here.
Counselor Little?
Here.
And Chair Marshall?
Here. Okay, moving on to public comment, and this would be on agenda items only.
And if I can, I have a couple amendments.
I'm sorry, I circled it and then I skipped over it. Are there amendments to the agenda?
Yes, I have a couple please today. The first one is removing item number 4.3, which is the community planning work plan. We'll bring this back another week.
Okay.
And then adding 9.2 under executive session for five minutes for potential litigation. No after action.
Same RCW?
Yes. And 9.3, 10 minutes, potential litigation, no after action.
And for the 9.1, is there after action on that one?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, so adding those. Now, let's go to public comment. Three-minute limit on agenda items only. Is there anyone in the room?
Carmen De Leon.
Sylabus, syllabus, okay. My name is Carmen De Leon, and I go by Mello, not that you guys forgot or anything. Okay, so we're talking about the minutes of the 19th, and you guys went on and on about the shelter, which I guess you guys provide 46 of the beds, 40 per six of the beds for the homeless in Vancouver. So why do they need so much help? You only have a, I think the consistent rate is 600 to 700 on the street, so that's 300 beds provided by the county. Why is Vancouver so needy? You know, they've been misspending left and right, overpaying their officials, and yet they want more and they want more. And who cares what the voters want? Because we know the voters don't want Max and light rail, but I've seen all of their meetings, they're gonna do it, they don't care. So who cares about the voters, right? Vancouver sure doesn't. They've proven it. Because I've gone to them and pretty much just been laughed at and told I was gonna go to jail if I talked to them more. So I've lost all faith in Vancouver. They should be locked up. Anyhow, so anyways, you guys are making the bridge shelter, which I obviously don't agree with, because one block, I'm looking at the building one block away, empty. It says for lease. Why aren't you just leasing that building and using it? You can use it for shelter, you can use it for the, instead of building something for the police, I mean for the jail right there, one block away, man. Why can't they just use that for, you have enough space in there. It used to be one side was the welfare office and one side was CPS. Why can't it be one side sheltering about 150 people, same thing, and the other side for the police? I mean, the building's already built. All you gotta do is refurbish the inside for not the price of tearing something down and building something again, or buying more property further than it needs to be. It's right one block away, dudes, one block away, and you guys could have a whole bunch of needs taken care of, but there's gates around it, which tells me, is it the greed of Vancouver that wants to put buildings and tax everything and everybody to try and make more money instead of getting to the root of the problem, which is opioids? And everybody is for great, yeah, you're gonna put a social worker over here for the jails? Why don't you add some sheriffs? Because we need sheriffs, too. You know, the money could go for the sheriffs. We need people to arrest, and we have the embarrassing amount of the lowest per capita sheriffs in, is it the nation or just Washington? Either way, it's bad. Nothing to be proud of. I'm just saying that you could spend money in better ways in purchasing things and redoing them. And the bridge shelter, whatever, I guess they're getting their cut because it's not solving the problem. You gotta get rid of the opioids coming in, which is why we need a clean border. We need to be able to arrest the drug dealers. If you wanna check, go buy some crack on the street. If it's cheap, they're still getting it in. If it's expensive, then Trump is doing his job.
Okay, thank you. Someone else?
Teresa Hardy.
Teresa Hardy speaking on minutes, policy dabbler discussion. First off, the DNR failed to address a few things that is our understanding, and one is that the counties do have a say in what happens to their trust lands, and the DNR ignored a county letter that was sent to them asking for a pause. It ignored organizations that have asked for a pause, and it ignored a current appeal for other legacy lands to pause the sale and timber cut of our legacy lands. We are also under an understanding that trust, as a trust beneficiary, that lands can be swapped. So why did the DNR not address, could we have swapped the sale of this legacy dabbler for other plantation sales within the county? Did it have to be the dabbler that got cut? Couldn't we have postponed, paused, and then looked at other younger plantation areas to provide that same amount of money to our schools, our libraries, and everything else? And then they did address the fact that during the December BNR board meeting, which was the sale of approximately 13 legacy forest lands throughout the state, that one of the board members, I attended online, one of the board members asked for a motion to stop and pause all legacy lands before Dave Updegrove took office, because he made it part of his campaign platform, that he was going to stop the sale of legacy land, and they voted not to pause it when a pause could have happened in the December meeting. If we look at our school, if we look at the situation of providing and who are our beneficiaries, the superintendent of public instruction has been quoted in the Seattle Times that he is not in favor of using timber sales to finance education. That is a very old, it was, you know, established back in the late 1800s, but as we move forward, counties and across the state of Washington, we need to move forward with legislation that we find other funding for our schools and not make it our timber cuts. But right now, we're faced with, it's a legacy forest. What do we as the county have the right to do, and what do we have the right to say about what our, what lands get cut? And does it have to be our legacy forest? Could we not have swapped out something else? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We don't have any more in the room, but we do have two signed up online.
Okay.
Caller, you've been sent a request to unmute. Please state your name for the record and go ahead with your comment. Caller, you've been sent a request to unmute. Please state your name for the record and go ahead with your comment.
Hello, is this my turn?
Yes, please go ahead with your comment after stating your name.
Yes, Margaret Tweet. My comment is regarding the CTRAN and whether there will be a vote on light rail. In 2012, the reason for the vote is that it was required by law in order to bring in light rail. The Vancouver mayor at the time did not favor a vote, but it was required, so it was held. And as you know, voters in every city in Clark County rejected light rail in 2012. Now, at the December board meeting, there were options shown for funding light rail. And one of them, I cannot find in the state law, that's 82.14.105. It appears to have been updated. But that particular RCW that was used in the December presentation is no longer available to look at. But the other two options were both voter approved, and we haven't had a vote yet. But it's important that this voter approval step be taken, and I believe it should be sooner rather than later, because, you know, if the design needs to be redone, it should be redone sooner rather than later, as was mentioned in the meeting today. Also wanted to note that the recovery rate that you were shown that included buses and light rail, they can easily separate out the light rail. It's already separated in their historical data, which goes back at least 10 years. And since you had asked that question a few weeks ago, I felt you should have gotten the answer today, and the public, too. It's, these meetings are not broadcast, the IBR presentations aren't broadcast, so it's difficult to watch. It's difficult to follow for the public. So if you wanted to put it on CVTV, maybe that would be a help. But back to the voter approval, it's in chapter, RCW Chapter 81 is what outlines the method and manner in which light rail is introduced in an area, and it always requires voter approval, and that matches the presentation. So everything I have seen indicates that voter approval is required to introduce light rail, and I don't understand why it's been postponed so long. So I did also send some data, very concerned about the lack of ridership information, and these updates that we keep being promised never seem to come to, not even at the CTRAN board meetings. So I would like to request that you do ask for the ridership over each bridge. I think that would help in the public. And I question how that information could not even have been presented by CTRAN to the CTRAN board during the-
Okay, thank you, Margaret, your time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There someone else?
Caller, you've been sent a request to unmute. Please press star six on your phone and go ahead with your comment after stating your first name.
Kimberly Gohean Elbin, life citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. I happen to be at my sister-in-law's memorial, and so I'm on my phone standing outside here. I'd like to make notes to all of the comments today, that, and I'll be speaking on the minutes also, is that this local government here that you serve and all the other entities that are from this are of the people, for the people, and by the people, and you need to listen to them. They're telling you things that you're not protecting us against, such as the dabbler forest. You know, in today's work session, they mentioned, well, there's no real habitat around there, so we're not, we deem it that we can cut the timber there. Well, how much nonsense is that? When you listen to these people, we know that they wanna put food on their table, but let's again, a citizen brought up, there's other alternatives. And so there are people standing up there, and when there's one person, and I know there's more, there's 50 or 100 people behind them, such as when I speak. There's 50 to 100 people behind me, and if this council was as transparent as they think they are to the public, there'd be hundreds of people there. Because this is the time now to hold our government accountable for what's been going on, and the budget, clear from the budget to, you know, timber sales and all of this. You have a huge job, and you, you know, decided that you're going to get elected and serve the people of the people for the people and by the people. So let's do that. Listen to these people that are concerned about dabbler, which I am also, also concerned about light rail. You consistently, they've spent millions of dollars on this little plan with maps and all this, and all those people that you have spent on, I'd like to have somebody gather up how many millions of dollars we've spent on something that the Clark County citizens rebuked three times. We don't want light rail. Count that money up, and that's what I'm talking about, getting the government back to showing where are those expenses? Why did you spend so much? Because frankly, during criminal Biden's tenure, he allowed people to use hard-earned tax dollars for nothing, other than for the love of money and those, here it is, I serve God, family, and country. And so I do speak on people that have a love of money. We've got to stop this and hold you guys accountable, everybody. So you might be decent people there, but you might be twisting things in your own little mind of what government is. So we're gonna wake the people up, and we are in today's-
Okay, thank you, your time's up. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to old business, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 19th, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded, all those, any corrections, by the way? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, minutes passed. On to 4.2, Vancouver Housing Authority draft resolution. Jordan, will you be speaking to this?
That's correct, Chair.
Thanks. Take it away.
All right, thanks, everybody. Good afternoon, council. For the record, Jordan Bogie, senior policy analyst. This is following up on a request from council for a little bit more information related to a request from the Vancouver Housing Authority for a resolution that would allow the VHA to operate within the boundaries of unincorporated Clark County. So currently, as you'll recall, based on state statute, the Vancouver Housing Authority can work within the bounds of the city of Vancouver and then five miles outside of city limits. And they are requesting that council pass a resolution that allows VHA to operate without getting council approval to operate in the unincorporated county. And so last time we talked about this, council had a couple of questions, one of which was, has council in the past canceled or put a stop to any VHA project? I reached out to Andy Silver, who's the director over there, and he was not aware of any time that VHA has needed to specifically get approval from the county council for their projects, so they haven't had any projects banned by the county council, or not approved to move forward, rather. However, they have had projects denied in other jurisdictions. Most recently, the battleground city council deadlocked 3.3 on a public-private partnership project, an affordable housing project that they were working on in Vancouver. And really, the reason that VHA would like to have blanket approval is that it helps them move at the speed of the market. You know, if there's an opportunity for the Vancouver Housing Authority to purchase real estate, to acquire or develop a building for affordable housing, it is tough if they then also need to go through a political process where, you know, it takes time to get in front of council, to have a hearing, to answer questions, and that can endanger projects when there is some time sensitivity. And, you know, it also means for them, a more public process that can lead to, you know, media attention or other things that might influence other prospective buyers of the property or folks that Vancouver Housing Authority might be working, you know, competing against, I guess, for a potential property as they're doing their due diligence period and inspection work on any given property. And then the final reason that Vancouver Housing Authority is interested in this is they hope the county council can show some leadership, as VHA is also working to get similar resolutions passed by the small cities outside of Vancouver in the county to allow them to operate within as well. And so the hope is that, you know, if other folks see that the county council is supportive of VHA's work in developing affordable housing and has given them authorization, that that might also incentivize other jurisdictions to take similar action. And so if we, if we look at the resolution itself, it shows, you know, RCW 3582070 provides the authority for a housing authority to exercise its power in a certain area, in this case Vancouver, and then a five-mile radius outside, and then anticipating that work will be ongoing in the county by VHA, that the authority here is given by the county council to not require them to seek approval on a case-by-case basis for any individual project. And so that is where the current state of affairs are, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions that council has, and see if there is interest in moving this forward. If there is, the draft resolution would get updated, and we would move it to a Tuesday meeting for formal council approval.
Thank you. And I'd just add, this was discussed at Echo, and unanimous support for all of the jurisdictions to move this forward and adopt it. So any comments or questions? And again, this is not voting on the resolution itself, but giving direction to move forward with this.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I think this is great. I think this, what this does is removes a barrier at a time when we are struggling with building enough housing for our community members, and it allows them to move quicker, as I think Jordan mentioned, at the market speed to build housing outside of their current boundary. So I think this is a good approach.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think it's a good approach as well. I think we just need a third counselor to give it the nod, and we can, oh, there's a third, and a fourth, and a fifth. Okay, there we go. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you, council. We'll get this updated and on to an upcoming Tuesday meeting.
Okay, moving on to new business. Any new business?
None today.
No new business. Counselor reports. Are there counselor reports? I have a counselor report. So I attended the mental health sales tax meeting, the advisory group, and one thing that came up during that meeting was that we, Clark County, had not received any funding. Generally, we receive grants for some of the nonprofits in our county from the Housing Trust Fund. And so there was some concern expressed, and I thought it would be good perhaps to write a letter just to express our concern, our need, and alert the Housing Trust Fund that we'd like to see more resources coming our way. Would there be, I don't have a draft letter today, but just wondering if that would be a good message, a kind message to send to the Department of Commerce.
Just a quick question. Do we have any inclination as to why no funding was allocated here?
No specifics, but it was, just seemed, the opinion was, it was odd that we didn't get any funding in Clark County.
Well, it certainly would support a letter, and any funds that we can bring to our county is beneficial.
This would be encouraging, that.
Yes.
Thumbs up, thumbs up all around. Okay, thank you for that. I'll work with Jordan on drafting a letter, and we can get that out to you. Yes, go ahead.
Real quick, just quick question. So there was a public comment about our, you know, our council times not being on CVTV, and, you know, quite frankly, I think I agree with, I mean, we are dealing with some pretty major issues on our Wednesday meetings. And I know I had a conversation quite a while ago with the county manager, and I know that there would be an added expense to have CVTV record our meetings. I was actually surprised to have my wife ask me how to watch our council time meeting. She has watched council meetings on Tuesday because it comes up on her phone and Facebook or whatever as CVTV, and I do think it would be something that we should consider adding, given the depth of the discussions that we're having on Wednesdays. But I would like to have staff gather some information so we have all of the details before we would make any kind of a decision like that.
Is there audio available, though, of the council time?
Yeah, all of these are recorded and posted online, so people can watch it, video, and listen to it. And are you looking at just council time or work sessions as well?
You know, I think we should look at both, and maybe keep it separate so we can see each individually. And they are available. You can get in there, but it requires a different route than our Tuesday meetings in some regards. So it's still on a link, you know, after the meeting, on our agenda, you can click on it to watch the video and such. But for actively being, or listening to it, but not being a participant, like signing in, it's a little, it's easier for people to do it when it's being broadcast by CVTV.
What do you mean, it's easier to participate? Because they log on the same way?
Right, just like, for example, if you do pay attention to CVTV, it will pop up in your Facebook, oh, Clark County Council Meeting right now, or City Vancouver Meeting right now. People see those notifications, they can click on it in live stream.
Would it be helpful if we put that on our Facebook page for these meetings? I'm just-
Perhaps.
Couple, a couple thoughts. If council wants us to look into this, we can. One is definitely cost. We just got a huge cost increase now that we can't afford, and we're trying to figure out how to pay for that for CVTV. Also, timing, because this is, they have, they cover the ports, the city, I mean, there's a lot of stuff on CVTV, and that takes up airtime also on TV. And so that's, if, because that's the, I think, the main difference between the two is, one's on TV and one is through, like YouTube, I think it's on YouTube is where we post them.
And it is kind of, it is, it is kind of tricky to go, and like, if you know a specific meeting that you want to go to, you can go on our, you know, on our calendar and click on the link later on. But if you just kind of want to scroll through our meetings, it's very tricky, because you have to go to YouTube and you have to search.
You don't have to do that. You just go on our agenda, that's where-
Right, but if-
On the, on the main page, the CVTV link is there on Tuesdays, and all of our other links are on the same page.
Right, but you need to know what you're looking for. So as opposed to just going to one place where, you know, CVTV has just a list, you can, it doesn't have the agendas even, it just says this meeting, this meeting, you know, you can go on a list. It's a little more intuitive and easy to use, and I think it improves public access. But I understand it comes at a cost, and I think that's something that should be evaluated when we consider. But I would like to get some basic level information on what that would entail, what it would cost.
Other counselors on that?
I mean, I like the idea-
I personally have a concern with, we have a major budget deficit in this county and the state. I don't know if that's such a great idea, if it's already available.
Thank you. Other comments?
Chair, I was just gonna say that I appreciate the real-time transparency and to remove the clunkiness and make it easier for our community members to access these meetings. But yeah, that is my concern. It is the cost as well. I think you mentioned Facebook Live. Is that an option?
I don't know about, lovely, Johnny, here in the room. We have a Facebook site, we've got social media, we have Twitter, we have all that, and we can certainly put a message out there saying council meeting this morning, or council meeting right now. And Johnny, if you have-
And with a link, or something like that?
We can certainly do that, yes.
That's a good start.
If there, I mean, if there are other improvements in ways that we can make it better that are not significant dollar amounts, I'd be happy to look at that as well.
Can you send me the information? Because I haven't heard anything on this before, so it'd be helpful to know what people are struggling with, so that we can make sure that we're addressing that. Thank you.
Counselor Little?
Yeah, I would like to look into providing more real-time info for the public, only if it can stay within budget. I'd like to see what those options are.
And we're live right now, so we have, we're real-time right now. We've got 13 people watching right now. 23 total, but the 10 are panelists, which is very similar to a Tuesday meeting. Sometimes only one or two, sometimes we have 30, depending on what's on the agenda.
Chair, I think a good focus would be increasing engagement. And so increasing, you know, more people to watch our meetings, not that they're exciting, but.
Okay, so am I hearing just right now, move forward with getting things out, I don't, we might be doing it now, but putting things out on Facebook on meeting days with the link to the website or where they could find it, and put it out that way right now? Is that sufficient?
That sounds good to me, and I, if there are any low or no-cost avenues to make the information accessible, sounds like that's the general sentiment.
I'd say I don't think there's gonna be additional costs, other than staff time, just putting it out there on every Wednesday.
Great, thank you. Any other counselor reports? Okay, moving on to work session requests.
None today.
Okay, then we're down to policy updates. And we are following up from the work session this morning. So that's, I, maybe I should have mentioned it as the agenda item, amendment to the agenda on the IBR Ctran permissive language. So we'll put that down as 8.3, I guess. But let's start with legislative updates. Jordan?
All right. Thanks, counsel. Again, Jordan Bogie, Senior Policy Analyst for the record. I've got a few bill updates for you today. As you know, last Friday was the first policy cutoff in the legislative session. And so bills needed to make it out of their committee of origin unless they were in one of the fiscal committees. This Friday is the deadline for those fiscal committees to move bills forward. And so things are moving fast and furious. And so just a few updates and looking for direction on a few items today. So the first is that, as you'll recall, council identified one of their legislative priorities as working to upgrade our permitting software, working with the E-City Gov Alliance, which is a consortium of cities and counties in the state of Washington that are, that have previously worked together to develop back end permitting software systems. However, a lot of these systems are, you are interfacing with like front end systems that are much older and more idiosyncratic. So the, the group is also working on these front end systems to make it easier for those who are actually using and accessing the permits. And so we have kind of a standardized system that can be used for those. As part of that request, the E-City Gov Alliance is requesting $2.7 million, which is half of the development costs for this project from the state of Washington, specifically the Department of Commerce to support this work. And they are at the point in the process where we are just probably three weeks or a month or so away from budgets getting developed and, and posted out for folks to see. And so the E-City Gov Alliance is requesting a letter of support from council related to this project. And so I would ask to see if council is supportive of writing a letter in support of the funding request. We've already, of course, made it known to our, our delegation through a few different means in the conversation that we had with them last fall. And then in some of the subsequent conversations with our lobbyists and having stayed engaged in that work and certainly the work that April is doing at the community planning and development level. So we're just to look to see if council is supportive of writing a letter. And if so, I would put that together and, and bring that back for you next week for final approval.
I, I have just a question. Would it just be to our delegation or would be it to the appropriate committee chair and members?
So I was thinking we would send it to, yeah, so both to the relevant committee and then to our legislative delegation specifically as well, so that, so that they had a copy of it.
Great. Counselors, how do you feel? Thumbs up? Oh, we got five thumbs up. So thanks, Jordan.
Wonderful. Thank you, counsel. The next item I have for you today is, it's Senate Bill 5734, as well as House Bill 1958. And this is a request that actually came up on Monday, but we unfortunately did not have a quorum. So council was unable to take a position. So we're following up. But this, this bill, it's, I'm not entirely sure which one is going to be the final vehicle for this. But this bill 5734 in the Senate, 1958 in the House, provides bonding authority for the new I-5 bridge. And it is in the Senate, co-sponsored by Senator Cleveland and Senator Harris. And I believe the request came through our lobbyists from Senator Cleveland, but they have requested if council would be willing to take a positive position on this bill, which allows for the issuance of up to $1.6 billion of bonds for the design right away and construction of the Interstate 5 Bridge Replacement Project. And then it provides those bonds as triple backed. So basically, the, the bill says here is the bonding authority. And then it makes sure that those bonds are, have the full faith and credit of the, the state of Washington, being backed by first tolls and then state gas tax and vehicle fees. And then the full faith and credit of the state, which if for some reason the other funding sources weren't enough, basically it's saying the state of Washington is good for this money as part of the bonding process. And so they were hoping that the county council would sign in to support this bill.
Okay. And I understand it had a hearing. Is that correct, Tuesday?
Yes, the hearing was, yes, Tuesday at 1:30.
Is there another hearings for the other bills scheduled this week?
Let me take a quick look here.
I just recollect there were two deadlines happening this week. While you're looking, any thoughts from the council? On supporting this bill?
I think it's impressive that it's being supported or sponsored by folks on both sides of the aisle. So.
Okay.
We got to pay for it somehow.
Yeah.
Right. I think Counselor Young and I were thumbs up at our legislative meeting on Monday. I see a couple more. Counselor Belkot, oh, okay, thumbs up all around. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you all. And the House bill was heard on Monday. So we've got a little bit of time before it moves on to the, the next step. And we'll, we'll keep track of where that goes.
Great. Anything else?
Yeah, there's a couple more bills I wanted to bring in front of you today. There's another one that came up on Monday that we didn't have a quorum quite for council to take a position. But this is a bill that just recently came to my attention and is pretty relevant to some of the conversations that have been had around the bridge shelter and specifically using mental health sales tax for new facility construction. And so this bill 5696, it's a Senate bill, it explicitly clarifies that the intent and spells out in clear language that mental health sales tax funds can be used for construction of new facilities. Currently, the way that the legislation is, is written, as we, as we discussed last week, it explicitly allows for modifications of existing facilities and then lists a number of other items that can be funded related to program and service delivery. But this bill would, would make it clear that, that funds can be used for construction of new facilities. And so wanted to bring that forward for council's consideration and see if that is a bill that council would be interested in supporting.
Okay, I see four. Counselor Belkot?
I'm gonna abstain from this. I'm just leaving it at that.
Okay. There's a question here. Go ahead.
Yeah, Jordan, what are the chances of passing? Any indicators?
So I, I think it's possible. So I haven't heard a lot of detail about this as I've just kind of been coming up to speed, but it has been scheduled for an executive session in Senate Ways and Means tomorrow. And so that is a, that is a good sign for it. And I know that based on some of the other information I've seen, and certainly the original intent of the mental health sales tax legislation was to provide a flexible use of funding for local governments. And so across the spectrum of service delivery, and there have been some writings by some of the folks that passed the sales tax initially to that, to that effect. And so I think, you know, I, I wouldn't put a percentage on it necessarily, but I think that there is certainly a decent chance that, that this can move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we have four. I would just comment on this one. Decades ago, the decision was made to have local services for these kinds of things, but the funding never followed. It would be great if these facilities already existed, but in fact, they don't. So good to have this clarified. It's still up to us and our advisory group to prioritize how those monies are spent. Okay. Have another one for us?
So the, the last bill I want to just bring up today is, is more of an update rather than a position, although council would be welcome to, to take a position. I'm still digging into this a little bit. This is something we've been following a little bit, just from a distance. And this is House Bill 1135, as well as Senate Bill 5197. And this bill has, has moved around a little bit. It has had a substitute bill. It has been amended. And what this bill would do is it amends the, the Growth Management Act and says that the Growth Management Hearings Board may not issue a finding of compliance unless the county or the city has amended the portion of the plan or regulation that were found to be non-compliant. So if a, if a city or a county completes a comprehensive plan and they find a, they've amended a portion of a plan that's been found to be non-compliant, and the resulting plan or regulation subject to the non-compliance order has to be compliant with the requirements of the, of the chapter. And this change was initially talked about in more of a technical way, that this bill would just kind of be a, a technical fix that says, oh, you know, if you have a portion of your comprehensive plan that is non-compliant, you need to fix it and make it into something that, that is compliant. However, there are some fears that this would actually be kind of a radical change to the Growth Management Act. Typically, there's a 60-day statute of limitations on litigation for, for comprehensive plans. And there's some fear that this would open up Growth Management Acts and Comprehensive Plans to, to a lot of different litigation and a lot of issues potentially that could be kind of ongoing, cyclical, outside of the statute of limitations in bog counties and cities down as they work to both get into compliance and move forward with their chosen development plans. And this apparently comes out of, there is a bunch of issues that have arisen in Snohomish County that I have asked for some more information about. And just in the last couple of days have found out some more, more details about that. So I'm still working through, but I just wanted to flag that for council. This is something that we've kind of been keeping an eye on a little bit. And it seems like it might be something that council wants to take a position on as we move forward. So I anticipate that this is going to come up in the discussion on this next Monday at our legislative update with our lobbyists. And I'll have some more information hopefully later this week that I'll share with council by email. But I just wanted to flag that for you as, as an item that we should be keeping an eye on.
Great. And I would just look to Chris Cook, if you have any comments on this one?
Oh, thank you, Chair. I certainly have thoughts about it. And I don't know if it'd be more appropriate for me to talk about it now or to be at your Monday meeting and talk then. But I, I do have thoughts.
Since we haven't always had a quorum at our Monday meetings, I think Counselor Little, or one, would like to hear the information now.
Okay, delighted. It appears to me that this bill is an attempt to overturn a court loss. The Growth Board does not have jurisdiction to hear an appeal of anything past 60 days after the comprehensive plan change was adopted. You got 60 days. You can appeal then. If you don't appeal within 60 days, it's part of the comprehensive plan. And that is, as I say, it's jurisdictional. So in the Snohomish County case, as I understand it, the the county went to the Growth Board after its plan had been ruled non-compliant and went through the, went through the compliance proceedings. So if the Growth Board says your plan doesn't comply, then the law requires you to work to fix that. So the county went to the Growth Board as required by law and said, oh, look, we fixed that problem. The adverse party, which was Futurewise, attempted then to get the Growth Board to listen to their complaints about other aspects of the county's plan that had not been subject to the initial appeal. The Growth Board ruled it didn't have jurisdiction to hear that. Futurewise appealed to Thurston County Superior Court, which upheld the Growth Board. And now Futurewise wants to change the statute that controls the Growth Board's jurisdiction to say, well, once they come back on a, on a compliance, you can kind of look at anything. Which is, I think, contrary to the letter and the spirit of the law. I mean, obviously, it's contrary to the letter now, or they wouldn't be changing it. But the idea with Growth Board appeals is that you can do it within the timeframe. And otherwise, everybody, the government, the developers, people who might not appreciate particular developments, all have certainty about the law that applies because the law was adopted and it wasn't appealed. So there it is. I, I think this bill's a really bad idea. And I would, I would suggest that the council look at it from the standpoint, I mean, now, for example, Clark County is under a ruling of non-compliance. What is somebody going to ask the county to do when we go back to the Growth Board and say, okay, here's, here's the fix? So I think this creates significant uncertainty and potential serious problems for the county.
Thank you. That was good for us all to hear. Any other thoughts or questions? Jordan's got his eye on this one. Go ahead.
Just, there's no time constraint on this, is there?
Let me just double check. I don't think there's any hearing happening imminently. No, there's no, there are no further hearings scheduled at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Belkot.
Thanks, Chair. I just don't feel like we know enough about this at this point. So I, I don't, I don't want to say yes or no. I feel like we should maybe wait till Monday to see if Josh and Connie and, and Chris is with us as well to see, or get more information. That's where I stand. Thank you.
Thanks. So we'll, we'll keep our eye on this and check in on Monday. Okay. Do you have any other bills for us?
That is the, that's the end of my legislative updates. That's for 8.1.
Okay, 8.2?
Thanks, counsel. Me again. This is related to the 1406 Affordable Housing Funds. So this will be a little bit of a refresher for counselors who've been here for a bit. But for our new counselors, in 2019, the Washington State Legislature approved Senate Bill, or sorry, House Bill, substitute House Bill 1406, which is a local revenue sharing program that remits 0.0146% of the state sales tax back to the county as a local government as a tax credit against the state tax. And this is not something that the legislature does very often. They typically are not fans of giving state money, whether portion of the sales tax, property tax, whatever. They're not usually a fan of giving the back directly to counties. So this is a really So this is a really great program that gives Clark County, we get about $800,000 a year into into this 1406 fund. And the county did approve it a few years ago. And this, when I started at the county, this this fell into into my lap. And in the past, we have we have granted out these affordable housing fund dollars on kind of an ad hoc basis when projects have arisen. You know, the Vancouver Housing Authority last year, Lumen Fidelis and the Recovery Hotel project. When those projects have have come up, they've been aware of the funds. They have submitted applications to access the funding. And we've been working to formalize this into an RFP process so that we can publicize it, we can make it known that these funds are are available, get out into the community. But something that came up recently in some conversations with the Vancouver Housing Authority were that there is potentially another option for for utilizing these funds. So instead of granting them out directly to affordable housing developers, the county could potentially bond against these funds. And that could potentially leverage a lot more funding for for affordable housing. So instead of saying, okay, we have $800,000 per year, you know, that for any one individual affordable housing project is probably just going to be kind of a small piece of the overall capital stack that they require for those projects. It might be possible to to bond against these funds and say, okay, well, you know, could the county leverage the, you know, yearly funding that is coming in approximately $800,000 and see what might be possible in terms of, you know, a bond, which could raise a lot more revenue for affordable housing development? And then you would utilize these funds that come in to pay against the principal and interest on those bonds. And so we have a we have a steady funding stream for a period of time. And and so that might be an option. And so really what I'm looking for from council is before I dig into what those options might be to present to council, I just wanted to bring this to you for your consideration to see if if you would like me to to look into more about what some of the options for utilizing these funds are before I spend a bunch of time kind of going down some of these rabbit holes and figuring this out. I wanted to make sure I brought it to you to see if this is a a policy direction that council was interested in in traveling down.
Thank you, Jordan. Comments from council, councillor Little?
Yeah, thank you. What is the current entity that gives out the grants now? Do we do it as a council or is it through echo or another committee?
So it they have been directly granted out by council. Council has reviewed some of the applications, though there have not been very many. You know, and I think publicizing the program more is is something that is of interest. But the council has done this directly. So for instance, last year, there were two projects that that applied. The Weaver Creek Commons Project in Battleground that was Vancouver Housing Authority project. And then Lumen Fidelis and the Recovery Hotel, they were working to do some infrastructure upgrades on a property. And so council had approved the use of funds for that project as well. And so so that's how we've done it in the past.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, if we look into doing a larger fund, I would think we should also look into what entity would be best to give out those grants.
Councillor Young?
Yeah, just one clarification really quick. I I think I know the answer to this, but I wanted to double check is, are these funds only coming from unincorporated area of the county? And I think each city has their own ability to elect to take those funds, is that correct?
That is my understanding that each local government can take. It's available in increments of 0.0073%. And we get twice that. I would need to double check what other jurisdictions are accessing this funding stream. But I I do believe that other jurisdictions can also access this. I can double check on that.
Okay, so I I have some initial thoughts on this. I I would like personally, I would like Jordan to be able to look into this a little bit to see what kind of dollar amount we're looking at if we leveraged it for a bond. I do have some concerns. And the largest concern to me would be that we would, you know, when you're looking at a large project like that, you're looking at only large participants in affordable housing. So you're eliminating the possibility of small organizations receiving grant funds most likely because a small organization is not going to ask for something that would require leveraging the funds for a bond. So but I would like to look into it and see if we can better understand it for sure. Because it might be. And and that's question two is what kind of a project do we want to see come out of it if we do decide to go that route?
Okay, other comments?
I support as well, Jordan, looking a little more into how we can leverage potential bonds to increase the amount. And a quick question, Jordan, you mentioned that this will be a revenue source for a few more years. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, it's.
What is that number?
Let's see. I believe the I believe the bill sunsets. And so I'm just trying to see when that that ends. Okay, the tax imposed by a county or city expires 20 years after the date on which the tax is first imposed. And so it was first imposed. I think. Sorry, looking this up.
It's okay.
You had said 2019. Was that how we took it locally or this?
2019 was when it was passed by the state legislature. And so I am. I'll have to double check when the county took it. Probably was 2020 or 2021. So we're looking at, you know, probably another 15 or 16 years of of funding.
Okay, and and to clarify, Jordan, these past few years, it hasn't gone through an RFP, correct? But that is a possibility moving forward if we decide to bond. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in the in the past, the organization would come forward and have a proposal and ask to be on the agenda and present it to council, and the council would allocate it.
Cheaper to administer since $800,000 isn't a lot, so.
Yes, yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay, so it sounds, and the question I had, have we taken the maximum amount possible? That 0.0073 is their ability to get more?
I believe that it is, we're taking the max. And so that's in it's in increments of 0.0073%. So we're actually getting 0.0146%.
Okay, thanks. Great, so it sounds like there's, let me just ask this question. Is there agreement for Jordan to look into this further? Thumbs, four thumbs up, five thumbs up, so that sounds good. And then within looking into that more, a couple of questions. It sounds like whether or not we want to pursue an RFP process, which you could come back to us with that information. I'd be supportive of that because it does open it up to the broader community. The proposals we've gotten are just for those entities that follow this very closely, aren't aware of it. And and then the bonding issue and how that would how that would operate. So there's a few wrinkles to this and worth looking into. So thanks for bringing that up.
Chair, do you need do you need thumbs for that one?
I thought I thought I got thumbs.
I think you added to it a little bit.
Okay, so I think now we have 10 thumbs up.
Thank you, council. And I just have one final item that just came up this week and so didn't make it on the agenda, but wanted to check in with council. The YWCA is having their SHINE Gala on March 22nd. It is a Saturday. And I did send council an email earlier this week when I got this, when we received this request from YWCA. And just would be curious if if folks know now. That's that's great, and you can let me know if you'd like to attend. If not, it would be great to hear as soon as as we can. Just because if three councillors would like to attend the event, we will need to notice it as a public meeting.
Do do people know now if they would like to attend?
Well, let me ask you this, does the county have a table or is this out of pocket?
The county has a table. The Health Department has had a table in the past.
Does that include council? Yes, and I'm going.
I have a I have another banquet that I'm going to, so I'm out.
So many banquets, so little time. I I was planning on attending.
Yeah, I'm I'm planning to as well, but given the calendar.
I have no idea.
I plan to, yes.
Okay, so a couple of maybes, a couple of yeses, and one one no.
So if you can confirm that, just so we can put it on the calendar, if we have to notice that, that would be great. Within the week or so, just let us know.
Thank you. Okay, that was a delightful one. Anything else?
That's all I got for you today. Thank you, council.
Okay, great. Well, that rolls us around to CTRAN and IBR. And Michelle, do you have the CTRAN information that is? I just, I think they they gave a presentation some weeks ago. But the the question really that councillor Belkot and I need for the council to advise us on is the language change that is coming up for reconsideration. So if we could look at that, just for starters, to remind people, not not a problem. So I guess I'll just keep talking a little bit while we're getting that up. So if you'll recall, the there was a language change on CTRAN. As far and it was just on the one hand, it sounds like a very simple change just to have May provide operation and maintenance funding. It's permissive language. It was adopted by the CTRAN Board in November. And in December, I think there was more information provided as to some projected. I don't think they're final numbers on operation and maintenance. And then in January, and I'll just say, I've attended two, a total of two CTRAN meetings. Councillor Belkot has been participating for the last couple of years. But in the January meeting, the board decided to reconsider that vote. And that will be coming back to CTRAN Board in, I think, March 11th is the next meeting. So and it it is a requirement that those councillors that serve on the CTRAN Board follow the direction of this county council. Similar similarly, the cities and other jurisdictions that participate, they get direction from their governing bodies. So in that, we didn't immediately reconsider the vote because I was in particular interested in this council better understanding the context for all of this and making sure we were voting according to your wishes. So here we are looking at the actual language change. And we've received a briefing from CTRAN and then just today from IBR and TRIMET. So councillor Belkot, please please weigh in.
Um, I I don't know if you all recall, but when CTRAN came to present, they clarified and they've been clarifying with all the different municipalities. This language stemmed from City of Vancouver. It was not created by the CTRAN, by CTRAN or the CTRAN Board. And so it was brought forward by the city. And then the CTRAN Board wanted to have a discussion on what the impacts of the proposed language change would have if if CTRAN decided to have Clark County taxpayers cover the O and M expenses of light rail. What would that look like? And collectively, the CTRAN Board was very taken aback by what the expense of light rail would be compared to bus rapid transit. So in January, I amended the agenda to have the board reconsider the proposed language. But the proposed language, it was not, it wasn't concrete. It it was not incorporated. It was all a discussion, basically, like a two part discussion. So next month, March 11th, CTRAN, the CTRAN Board will discuss this as to either cement this language and cover the expense, the O and M expenses of light rail or go back to the way our language was before in that we didn't cover the expenses of light rail. As CTRAN explained, it would be a tax impact to Clark County taxpayers, which would be put on the ballot in the very near future since the IBR project is up and going and moving. So that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, just to add a little bit to that. It it was actually adopted by the CTRAN Board in November. And that the language that was proposed, that that's that stands.
No.
But it was it was adopted in, it was adopted. The mayor of Vancouver is here nodding that, yes, it was adopted in November. I listened to the recording of that meeting. And and there was a unanimous, it wasn't unanimous, but there was a majority that voted to support this. But you you're you're correct that in December, when when the the numbers came out, that that people were really startled by those numbers. So that is correct. And we are, there was, the board did, the CTRAN Board did vote to reconsider this. So that's what we'll do in March. We'll reconsider this language to make it permissible to for CTRAN to have the option, whether or not they support or really enter into the conversation and negotiation on where those funds could come from. So councillor, any councillor?
To clarify, to clarify, so if it was adopted in November, the current proposed language stands, is that correct? No, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
The current proposed language is that it the so the proposed language that will be considered in in March will be that it revert back to a prohibition on CTRAN spending any money for O and M. And Mayor Ann, if you'd like to come up and clarify any of this, that would be that would be fabulous.
Chair, thank you. Anne McInerney-Ogle, I was the chair at the time. I'm surprised that it says proposed language. What is in front of you right now was adopted in November.
The proposed language was adopted.
That's why I'm surprised it says proposed.
I think that is.
It wasn't proposed.
Yeah, I think it was proposed in November.
It was adopted in November.
It was proposed and adopted in November.
And so CTRAN may participate. That was adopted in November. It came before the board, the board adopted it. So I don't know this slide.
This slide came from CTRAN, and I think they used the slides that were presented in the November meeting when it was considered.
The CTRAN Board has not seen what is going to be proposed for the May 11th meeting. This is what you see up there is the current language properly adopted by the board in November. We do not know what is going to be proposed March 11th. We do not know what is going to be proposed March 11th.
It'll be tough to get advice from the council if we don't know what will be proposed. I guess in reconsidering it, you know, we would be, something new would be proposed, but whether or not to rescind the language that was adopted in November.
To keep the adopted language.
Right, but there could be some different language that is offered.
If I might make a statement. If you will look to the left and look at the last lines. That is the part that throws it back two and a half years. If the old language is re-adopted, then asking CTRAN to help with the payment would move this back and approval would be immediately rescinded and send this entire project back two and a half years.
That specific language, I'll just go ahead and read it. If I, is the area that's underlined?
Yes, please.
Yeah, if the IBR team recommends a scenario beyond co-locating station costs or security where CTRAN through the agency, any PTBA funding or tax initiative managed by the agency for fiscal responsibility of light rail operation and maintenance in any form, the CTRAN Board of Directors approval of this MLPA will be immediately rescinded.
And that is why the language on your right-hand side allows CTRAN to participate in the conversation and the negotiations of the by-state transit.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming and, and speaking to this and clarifying. I just wanted to make sure that the wording right now, "may" does not mean "will." And it also doesn't mean that "may participate in funding" means that taxpayers in Clark County would pay the full twenty-plus million dollars for operating costs, correct? Okay, that's an important distinction here.
Well, also, and that cost is split with the state of Oregon. So that the twenty million operating isn't, uh, we, that, that would never be the full amount that goes to Clark County.
That is correct.
Right, I was just saying that this is a consideration for CTRAN, that they may participate in some of the funding for the Washington side of the proportion. Correct?
Correct, councillor. If I might, we also need CTRAN at the table to discuss and negotiate for us. If CTRAN pulls out of complete conversation, then we would need to hire a separate expert to come in and take a look at this. Removing CTRAN from the negotiation table. They are our experts. They know this. They know transit. They know transportation in the transit modes. It is absolutely essential that CTRAN participate and be at that table and working in the IBR project.
Thank you, councillor Belkot. Your hands up. Oh, you're muted.
I just went back and I looked at my motion from the CTRAN meeting in January. And it reads like this. I would like to amend the agenda to include reconsideration of November Agenda Item Number Three. Proposed Amendment of Board Resolution BR dash twenty-two dash zero-zero for Exhibit A, Section A, Financing, Section Two, which is where this language that's on the screen came from. So that was reconsideration. Now, as far, as far as I thought, uh, Mayor, this wasn't permanent. This was not finalized language.
Councillor, this language that you see on the right-hand side was properly notified on the agenda. It was notified, noticed, noticed on the agenda and proposed, discussed, and properly voted on in November.
Okay, other comments? Councillor Young?
I was just wondering, I don't know, can our legal team weigh in on this? I see that I, and I know you don't want to for sure, but what, what I'm trying to understand on this is you know, motion to reconsider, I don't know what their bylaws are. I don't know if they go by Roberts Rules with CTRAN board, but motion reconsider would be to simply cancel the action that was taking place, from my understanding. Is that accurate?
That, that is correct, councillor Young, and we do have legal, we have an attorney that supports us, just like the council.
Chris?
Right, and, and you are correct that I, I really don't want to speak to this because I have not reviewed any of those relevant documents.
Okay, what I'm just trying to understand is, I don't know how this will unfold when the meeting takes place, whether there's going to be, you know, other language proposed that we haven't been able to consider as a council, or whether it is simply going to be a vote to take back what they changed in November.
We, we don't, we don't know that. And my understanding, although I don't have my Roberts Rules in front of me, but that if, if we had reconsidered in January, then, then that would have changed. But it was adopted and we won't reconsider it until March. And then, and then we'll see what happens. Other thoughts? We're, we're looking for your guidance here.
Fair, I think you nailed it.
What, what did I nail? I'm not sure what I nailed.
Your, your interpretation.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes.
And then another question, I would look at the mayor to answer this, is who is, I mean, if, if the language that was adopted in November stayed, uh, who would be, when there's this negotiation that's taking place on who pays for what and how it's paid for, who would make those final decisions?
Councillor, you have eight agencies that work on this. The two dots, the two MPOs, the two transits, the two cities. We've asked the Olympia Legislative Group, the Chair of the House Transportation, the Chair of the Senate Transportation, to be involved in the funding of this interstate transit. The thinking here, there is no interstate transit authority of any type on the West Coast. If you're on the East Coast, you can get on Metro and travel from DC to Maryland to Virginia and back. That's an East Coast opportunity that doesn't exist on the West Coast. There is no interstate transit between Canada and Washington, or Spokane and Idaho, or anything along the Columbia River, or between Oregon and any other neighboring states or California. So we have asked for an interstate transit opportunity for discussion of MNO and operation. We have no authority on a transit organization that is outside of the state coming into the state. And that is why we need the state involved. And that is why we need CTRAN involved.
Right, my question was more directed at the estimated twenty million for the extension of the yellow line. When it comes down to, I mean, we've seen kind of a proposal at this point, but who is the deciding body on how those expenses will be shared?
Those eight agencies, and as you heard this morning in your workshop.
So CTRAN is one out of eight on a vote for that.
Exactly, and it's the agreements between the agencies, as Mr. Green pointed out.
Okay, so then, from my understanding, then, leaving it as the language that was adopted in November, when you say "may," that gives CTRAN the ability to pay for those services, but that decision on how much will not be the CTRAN board, but they will be one of eight vote on a body that will be making those decisions.
They are part of the decision-making body.
And additionally, I would add, it would go before the CTRAN board itself. And each of the representatives on the CTRAN board has their own jurisdictions, like this county council, that we will be answering to. So as far as checks and balances for any, any move that CTRAN is making, this council will be involved in, in at least directing to of the board members.
So clarifying on that, so is CTRAN able to say no? Uh, based on that group of eight, if they decide this share is this much, is how much CTRAN should pay, does CTRAN have the ability to say no?
They have their own governing board of directors.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that puts us in the event that there's a discrepancy.
Chair, I have a comment.
Yes, please go ahead.
I think I know where you're going with your question, councillor Young, I think. So if the C, CTRAN board collectively agrees in March to go with the language where we would cover the O and M expenses, or a portion of the O and M expenses for light rail, then it would go to the voters to have the final say whether they want to pick up the tab for that. That's how that would work.
Mayor, go ahead.
Chair, there are other options, and that is why I brought up Olympia. There is, there are other options that have never been discussed because we have not been allowed to discuss them. So some of those other options do involve the state of Washington.
And there would be a required vote if it, if it came to the uh CTRAN increasing fees and things like that, that would require.
CTRAN absolutely would be involved in that, but realize there are also funds from the city of Vancouver, Regional Transportation Council, and the state of Washington.
Sure.
Right, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for carrying this heavy load, shepherding this very important project. I'm sure you're very tired trying to keep up with it all. I know you can handle it. Uh, and I want to respect the voters who have, are mixed on this, certainly. When the decision was made to make the light rail the preferred alternative, that was in 2022, correct?
Correct.
We were not directly one of the parties. But once that decision was made, it became part of the preferred alternative upon which all the funding we've received and will soon hopefully receive are based on that preferred alternative. And I just want to go back to the presentation today to just talk about what funding might be at risk, not only just time of going back in time, but funding. So there's two different federal grants that we've received totaling 2.1 billion. And we heard today that that is at risk, may have to be renegotiated if light rail was removed as an option. The two funding sources from the state, a billion each from Washington and Oregon, also could be reopened uh based on that. Third, we're trying to get $1 billion currently from the capital investment grant, which may not be ineligible at all, or it would be just for a portion of it. So that's the whole bridge right there, and we know we have to do something. So I would be supportive, supportive of supporting the current language of "may", which is just meaning that it's just one of many funding options, and that we will figure that out later. But if there's a possibility for us to support the current direction, I don't think "may" is too dangerous.
Thank you for putting that so succinctly.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Chair.
Go ahead.
This is a tough one for me because everything that you said makes sense, absolutely. My, my struggle with this is not completely understanding the ramifications of it. I mean, the, the alarm bells went off at the CTRAN board. I don't understand all of the ins and outs that went into that. What I'm, I'm concerned about is opening the door, this is my biggest concern. Light rail is very expensive. Twenty million for three stations, and I think if I remember correctly, the entire budget of CTRAN is like ninety. So you're talking three stations for about a quarter of the entire CTRAN budget. So it's very expensive. It's an effective tool, there's no question about that, but it's kind of like looking at, you know, do you put a forty-year roof on your house, or do you put a thirty-year roof on the house? Well, budget sometimes dictates that. And my biggest concern with this is that we inadvertently wrap up all of CTRAN's potential funding for growth into the future into this. That is my single concern with this. And I'm not convinced that allowing the newly adopted language doesn't put that funding at risk. I don't know the ins and outs of that. So I'm really struggling with this. If I had some way to reasonably guarantee that you know, that at the end of it, CTRAN can choose whether or not they want to fund this and use the sales tax that they have the capacity for, that would be okay. But I don't, I don't, I just don't have that guarantee right now. And I'm concerned about the risk, like I said, of the ability for CTRAN, CTRAN to grow when we're talking about adding 200,000 people here in the next twenty years, and you strap their budget with three stations. That is the challenge here. I, I would like to find an alternative source of funds, and that's where your argument comes in as very valid, is that we can't really search for it until we, you know, give permission essentially to, for CTRAN to look at those sources and such. So I don't, I honestly am not quite sure here what the right answer is. And I guess in an ideal world, it would be to uh maybe even delay the decision that they have coming up at the CTRAN meeting and having the board itself deliberate again so that they can give us a better picture and we would be more informed, but I don't, I don't know. It's, this is a tough one.
They will be deliberate, deliberating in, in March when they reconsider this, so.
Right, but any decision that we make will be carried to that meeting. We won't have the information from the deliberation to be able to make the decision today. It's just, it's a timing thing.
Well, uh, just uh if I can try and summarize, it does seem as though light rail has been part of the preferred alternative. Funding is dependent uh for the entire project uh on that light rail. I believe that there are checks and balances related to protection of CTRAN. And I share your concern about what this might mean for CTRAN because in my district, there's plenty of needs in my district for more services. And again, with that 200,000 additional people, there's, there's a lot more need for CTRAN within Clark County. I, I think that the permissive language uh is, is a good step to continue to engage and have the expertise of CTRAN at the table. So I, I see this as just one incremental decision point. That's very important to keep the process moving forward. So I, I would be supportive of keeping the language that was adopted in November by the CTRAN board. But, uh, and let's just go down the line and people can say one way or the other.
I support it. I support that language.
Can, uh, councillor Fontes, can you just clarify which, which one you're supporting?
I support the language that was adopted in November twenty, or November of 2024.
There's three, uh, the, I would like to hear from the other two as well. Councillor Belkot.
I'm a "a."
I, at this point, would. I, at this point, would say that I would support the adopted language with grave concern, and I would hope that there is a good deliberation and understanding of what this obligates CTRAM to at that meeting.
Great. Okay, so I think Councillor Bellcott and I have our marching orders in terms of supporting the November language and sharing concerns about CTRAM and the needs that we have in Clark County. I'd also add, looking for additional sources so that Clark County doesn't bear the burden of what is an interstate transit system that we're trying to create. And as for different language that may come forward, I think that we'll have to base our decisions on what you've advised us to date.
Chair Marshall, the city of Vancouver agrees with you. The $7 million MNO was not something that the city of Vancouver was expecting either. And we're more than willing to advocate for CTRAM and work with CTRAM on that.
Just one question real quick. When is the next CTRAM meeting?
March 11th, coming right up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I just have one comment, clarification. The IBR project is not dependent on light rail. It is getting a grant based on the existence of light rail. Just wanted to put that out there.
I'm not sure I understand that.
It would still take place without light rail, and I also want to, I know some of the people that are watching or in the public, they're aware that the Coast Guard has not approved the current design of the IBR bridge because of the height issue. One of the reasons why there's a height issue is because it has to be a certain height in order to include light rail, which would impede traffic on the Columbia River.
There may be some continued uncertainties. This has been a big lumbering project and and we'll, oh. Mayor, did you have any final, was there an additional comment you wanted to make in response, if you could? It's a whole nother conversation. There'll be many more conversations in the next couple of years on this, so. Okay, thank you very much for that. We have our direction. The other thing that I, just while we're talking about IBR, there've been various resolutions, and I shared links that Jordan had put together that had been adopted by previous councils. It might be worthwhile taking a look at those previous resolutions and kind of see where this council is at at this point, and just suggest that maybe if someone wants to take the lead, perhaps with Jordan, on maybe redrafting some of that based on the conversations we've had these last few weeks. Is there a nod on that, or are you exhausted? Okay, all right. Well, we'll follow up with that. Okay, thank you very much for that. So moving on with the agenda. We'll be going into executive session. We have three items. 9.1, potential litigation, RCW 42.30.110, Perrin 1, Perrin little i, for 15 minutes, no after-action. Another potential litigation for five minutes, same RCW, no after-action. 9.3, potential litigation, same RCW for 10 minutes. There is some potential after-action, so that gets us to 30 minutes. So I would say 3:10?
I don't, Chair, just to clarify, I don't think there's any potential after-action.
Oh, for 9.3?
No.
No potential after?
No potential after-action.
On any of them?
Correct.
Okay, no after-action, but 30 minutes. So we'll reconvene at 3:10.
The Chair has asked us to announce that the executive session will be extended for an additional 20 minutes. An open session will reconvene at 3:30.
Okay, the council has returned from our executive session. There is no after-action, and so without objection, the meeting is adjourned.